Waiting on Laura to do the Pledge of Allegiance. There we go. All right, and before I gavel the meeting into order, I just want to thank the patience of everyone who's part of the study agenda for waiting through a very unusually long, regular meeting. So go ahead, call the meeting to order. And Councilmember Toy, would you like to answer? Would you like to offer a prayer or the Pledge of Allegiance?
Oh, is it me or Jim?
It is you.
Cool.
Unless you're not Councilmember Laura Toy.
I think I am. Thank you, President. Yes, I'll offer the Pledge of Allegiance to the flag.
All right, if we could all plead prayers. And Laura Toy, the Honorable Laura Toy leads in the Pledge of Allegiance.
Ready, help me out. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation under God with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you very much, Councilmember Toy. Again, and welcome to the May 10th study session of the Levonia City Council. This meeting is, will set the agenda for the 1,921st regular meeting, a voting meeting that will take place on Monday, May 24th, 2021. We have all members of the council with us this evening. I do not have any announcements, council. Does anyone have any announcements they'd like to make? Seeing none, move ahead. This is a study meeting. There are no votes taken at this meeting. The council members will, however, offer either one resolution or a combination of resolutions for each item. The resolutions offered may including an approving, denying, or referring resolution to a committee or city department for its report and recommendation. A resolution of no further action may also be offered. There are some items that may simply be received and filed for the information of the city council. Please note that all of the items on tonight's agenda will move on to the regular meeting of Monday, May 24th, 2021, where they will officially be voted upon. If you'd like to participate, any of the agenda items that are taken up this evening, please use the raise hand button or press star nine if you're joining us by phone when the item is called and you will be recognized at the appropriate time. Generally, the petitioner, whether that is the city or a private entity, will make the initial presentation, followed by those in the audience who wish to speak on the item. When you are called upon to speak, please state your name and address for the record so that your remarks may be properly attributed to you. It will also let the council members and those watching on Zoom or listening, joining us by phone, will know who is speaking to them. So we will begin with new business. Item number one is a request to barricade city streets. This comes to us from Jennifer Hewitson from Monday, August 2nd through Friday, August 6th, 2021, from 9:30 a.m. to 12:00 p.m. each day on Van Court between 36516 Parkdale and Raleigh for Vacation Bible School. Council.
Madam President.
Vice President Burr.
I believe this is one that comes before us each year. I remember from previous years, to my knowledge, there haven't been any issues with it. It's a positive event. I'd offer an approving for consent if there's no objection.
I see no objections, so we'll place on the consent agenda. Item number two is the reappointment of Charlotte, aka Charlie Mahoney, to the Economic Development Corporation of the City of Livonia Board of Directors. This comes to us from the Office of the Mayor for a six-year term. Then it will expire on June 7th, 2027. Ms. Thomas, are you making the presentation on this to us this evening?
Yes, yes. You, President McIntyre. I am happy to introduce Charlie Mahoney. Charlie Mahoney is president of 4M Associates, a community outreach consulting firm here in Livonia. She is a Livonia Civil Service Commissioner and is also the current Chair of the Southeast Michigan Community Alliance Workforce Development Board. Ms. Mahoney has spent over 30 years in public service. During her 24-year career at DTE Energy, she held management positions that expand, that span, that span, excuse me, engineering, customer service, economic development, marketing, and governmental affairs. Ms. Mahoney holds a Bachelor of Arts degree in government and economics from St. Lawrence University in Canton, New York. She is on the line and is going to say a few words if she can.
Yes, please. Good evening, Ms. Mahoney. Let's see. We should, there you go. You should be able to unmute yourself.
I am. I listened to the last portion of your meeting, starting at quarter of eight, and didn't have a mute button because I guess you don't give them to us. It was the most interesting meeting, and I'm happy that you were able to resolve whatever you resolved. But anyway, I know most of you, I think, other than Sarah and LaShawn, I really haven't, whom I haven't met yet. And it's always my pleasure to do something that will take my city forward in any way it can. So it'll be a pleasure to work in the economic development world in a city that has lots of promise.
Councilmember Jolly.
Thank you, Madam President. There, I don't, we'd be hard-pressed to find somebody who does more for our community or wears more hats than Charlie Mahoney. I'll offer an approving for consent and thank her for all her service and all her different roles. On a side note, we may want to go to audience communication at some point, just to check the box as well. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Jolly. Councilmember Toy.
I'd like to support, oh, what happened? I'd like to support Mr. Jolly, as well as add to her biography. That's Charlie Mahoney. She's an excellent fundraiser, just excellent. Rumor around town is when you see Charlie come and run quick or don't, because she does a phenomenal job of collecting dollars from all of us. And, you know, you can't even feed your dog at some weeks. But that's okay. We love Charlie. Also, I just want to add to her resume. She's a phenomenal golfer. In fact, she has golf shoes and, you know, just other priceless items when she does golf. So I just wanted to add those remarks in because I'd be remiss if I didn't. And she doesn't have the opportunity to get me back, I don't think, Madam Chair. So thank you very much.
Thank you. Councilmember Donavick.
Thank you, Madam President. I wanted to also add to Charlie Mahoney's background. When I first started getting involved in our community, somebody, people always say you need to meet this person, Charlie Mahoney, you need to meet this person. And I ended up meeting her, and she's been amazing. And constantly does so much great things for our community. And it's really inspiring to see the people like her in our community making a difference. So I'm really excited about tonight, and I look forward to other residents getting involved and engaging in the community like her. Thank you, Madam President.
Thank you, Councilmember Donavick. And thank you to your bird friend, who was also, I guess that's a literal tweet. Councilmember White.
I just want to add to the accolades to Charlie Mahoney. She is a wonderful person, a person I'm happy to call a colleague and a friend. She's served on the Civil Service Commission as well, and she just is a gem. The city is lucky to have her in our community. Thanks.
And I'll add one more thing. If there's, I've always said, if there's something good going on in Livonia, the odds are very high that Charlie Mahoney is a driving force behind it. And she was recognized, I've now lost count of how many years ago, as Livonia's first citizen, a very deserving award. And, you know, I think, as we all heard, we're all proud to know her and have her for a friend and appreciate her service in so many capacities to our community. And someone offered this already, correct? For the, would any objections placing this on consent? All right, seeing none. If anyone, and I will go formally to the audience, if anyone from the audience would like to comment on this agenda item. Seeing none, we will go ahead with, we'll move ahead to item number three. This is a reappointment of Elizabeth Betsy McHugh to Livonia Planning Commission. This comes to us from the Office of the Mayor for a three-year term expiring on June 9th, 2024. Ms. Thomas.
Good evening again. I am happy to introduce Betsy McHugh. Betsy McHugh is Vice President, Treasury Management Sales Advisor at Mercantile Bank of Michigan, a Grand Rapids-based community bank. Betsy has been diligent to intertwine her career goals with her passion of giving back to her community. She is a former member, excuse me, she is a former board member of the Livonia Chamber of Commerce and the Livonia Zoning Board of Appeals. Currently, she acts as Vice Chair of the Plymouth Road Development Authority and is also a board member of the Livonia Community Foundation. Betsy holds a Bachelor's Degree from Northwood University and a Master's Degree from Western Michigan University. And I believe Elizabeth, or I'm sorry, I believe Betsy's on the line, too.
Let's see. There we go. Should be able to unmute Betsy. Good evening, Ms. McHugh.
Oh, I was just hoping the whole time I sat here that I was going to be able to unmute myself. That was my goal tonight. Hard to follow Charlie as well, so I give my kudos to her. But thank you all for my consideration. At least I've been involved in one way or the other throughout the city. Love the city of Livonia, love being involved, and I appreciate all of your consideration. So thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Toy.
Thank you, Madam President. As you've heard, Ms. McHugh is very active and has some great accolades. And I, without any reservation, would put her nomination on consent.
All right, we are placed on the consent agenda. There are no objections. Seeing none, would anyone from the audience like to comment? Seeing none, we'll go ahead and place on the consent agenda. Item number four is the reappointment of Carol Smiley to the Livonia Planning Commission. This comes to us from the Office of the Mayor for a three-year term, which will expire on June 9th, 2024. Ms. Thomas.
Thank you. Carol Smiley was appointed to the Livonia Planning Commission in 2002. She credits her father for sparking her interest in planning as she would often work in his real estate office during her summer breaks from college. Mrs. Smiley retired from Livonia Public Schools Community Education back in 2002 as a Jackson Center Early Childhood Program Administrator. She and her husband, Jim, are grandparents to six wonderful grandchildren, and they also still have time to be active members of St. Maurice, St. Michael's, and St. Aden's parishes. I believe that Mrs. Smiley is on the line.
Good evening, Ms. Smiley.
Good evening.
How are you?
Great.
Good. Did you have anything you wanted to add?
No, other than I appreciate the opportunity to continue to serve the city in this capacity.
Well, thank you. It's nice to hear from you. Thank you for taking the time to call in. Thank you, LaShawn. Vice President Burr.
Yeah, Madam President, it's always my pleasure to be able to play a role in the reappointment of some of my former colleagues on Planning Commission. So I'd be happy to offer the approval for Carol for consent if there's no objection.
Are there any objections? Anyone in the audience like to address this? Seeing none, I'm going to add an editorial comment about Ms. Smiley. I had the opportunity, the privilege of serving with Mrs. Smiley on the Planning Commission, and I was brand-new to the Planning Commission and, you know, trying to figure things out. And Ms. Smiley really took me under her wing and showed me the ropes and helped me get, get kind of aligned with the Planning Commission much more quickly than I would have had I had to do it on my own. And we had Chairman Lee Morrow at the time. And Mrs. Smiley was a big part of the reason that things started off on a very good foot for me on the Planning Commission. She and her husband are very active in the community. I'd just like to add that we appreciate Mr. Smiley's service as a lieutenant, a longtime member of the Michigan State Police, and their son, Jim, who is, I'm not sure, Carol, if he is retired or in the process, has served as a captain for the Michigan State Police. So we certainly appreciate the Smiley's many contributions to our community in our state. And if there are no objections, and no one from the audience like to speak or have any objections, we will be placing your reappointment on the Planning Commission, Carol, and thank you for your willingness to continue serving.
Thank you. Thank you.
Have a good evening.
I enjoyed your nice, long meeting.
We all did. Thank you. Thanks for hanging in there.
Thank you. Good night.
Thank you. Good night. Item number five is the reappointment of Ian Wilshaw to the Livonia Planning Commission. This comes to us from the Office of the Mayor for a three-year term, which will expire on June 9th, 2024. Ms. Thomas.
Thank you. Ian Wilshaw came from a family who encouraged him to get involved in community service. He clearly accepted this challenge. Aside from chairing the Planning Commission since 2016, Mr. Wilshaw has served on the Traffic Commission and volunteered many hours with the Livonia TV and Livonia Spree. Mr. Wilshaw graduated from Stevenson High School and School Craft College. He and his wife Beth have been married for 25 years. And Mr. Wilshaw is on the line. Not sure if he wants to say a few words.
Ian? Let's see, I keep, I hit the button too quickly.
All right, can you hear me?
Mr. Wilshaw, would you like to say a few words?
Yes, hi. Good evening. Thank you, thank you, Ms. Thomas, for your introduction. Good evening, President McIntyre and council. I do want to thank the Mayor Brosnan for offering my reappointments for your consideration tonight. It's been an absolute honor to serve the community on the Planning Commission and to work with such a talented group of individuals, both on the commission and in our planning department. And I look forward to continuing to serve the community for the next three years on the commission with your concurrence.
Thank you, Mr. Wilshaw. Councilmember Toy.
Thank you so much, Madam Chair. It's indeed an honor and a privilege to nominate Ian this evening. I've known Ian's family for many years. I can't believe he's been married 25 years. I remember when he first dated Beth. Unbelievable. His brother Jeff and Ian were raised, as was mentioned by LaShawn, to be part of a community. His mother Dorothy was just an absolute stellar person, as is Ron, his dad. Dorothy did many years on the spree. In fact, I did her eulogy back when she passed. Gosh, it has to be more than 25 years ago, right, Ian? And it's unreal. So these guys, as little guys, and people growing up in Livonia, they can't help it if they went to Stevenson. But, Christ, Ian, I'm so proud of you for the person you've become and what you've done. And your mom would just be tickled pink to know what you've done. So God bless you and much success to you as you continue your service to our great city. Thank you.
Yes, she would. Thank you, Ms. Toy.
And you'd like that on the consent. Laura?
Do you want to put them through the regular? No, I'm teasing. Yeah.
I see no objections. Would anyone in the audience like to speak to this? Seeing none. Again, I'll add a comment here. I also had the pleasure of serving on the Planning Commission with Mr. Wilshaw, another person who was tremendously helpful to me. And I know that when we lost, or Lee Morrow stepped down from the Planning Commission and passed away not too long after that, the Planning Commission was very, very fortunate to have someone of Ian's caliber and knowledge and experience and contribution to the city to step up to do it. He had big shoes to fill and does an outstanding job. So Ian, thank you again for, or thank you for your willingness to continue serving. All right, and I think Ian is off the line. With that, we go on to item. Thank you, Ms. Thomas, for presenting all those excellent candidates to us this evening for appointment and reappointment. Item number six is a request for authorization of a two-year agreement for prisoner housing with the Calhoun County Sheriff's Office. This comes to us from the Division of Police with, for the existing transportation commitment and care of Livonia prisoners, including basic medical, dental, and access to social workers with an option for two additional years from budgeted funds. And I'm not sure if that's the chief that's with us this evening or someone else. Good evening.
Good afternoon, Council President and members of council. It is Chief Kate here, representing the Police Department on this item and the following item as well. The item before you, as indicated, is a request to you to award the bid for our prisoner housing to Calhoun County Sheriff's Department. They have been our vendor for the past seven years. We have partnered with the Finance Department to establish the specs for this bid. Their, Calhoun County was the sole bidder. And with that, we're requesting council's approval to accept that bid. It's a two-year bid with the option of a two-year extension.
Thank you, council. Councilmember Toy.
Everything's in order. Chief does a fabulous job. I hope he doesn't run to Detroit. So thank you, Chief, so much, and the excellent service they give us as well. Approving on consent.
All right, are there any objections? Seeing none, would anyone from the audience like to comment on this item? Seeing none, we'll continue along with item number seven. This is a request to extend towing contract with Livonia Towing through January 3rd, January 31st, 2022. This comes to us also from the Division of Police for towing and impound services under the same pricing terms and conditions of the previous agreement to allow time for preparation, development of a competitive bid for these services. This is original council resolution 188-16. Chief.
Good evening, Council Madam President. Again, this item is before you, requesting your authorization to extend the existing contract with Livonia Towing throughout this year. As mentioned, that we are establishing new specs for a contract going forward. You may be aware that the Kotts family has sold Livonia Towing, and there's a new owner. With that in mind, it seems prudent that we would certainly move forward with establishing specs with the new owner and put that out for bid. I've met with the new owner, and we have had no issues, no concerns whatsoever. And prior to the sale, I appreciate the Kotts family reaching out to me in advance to let me know that, of the transition of the business. The Kotts family has owned Livonia Towing for four decades, and we've enjoyed a great relationship with them. And the new owners, as I mentioned, have been, have accepted those same values. And again, though, I think it's prudent that we extend this with the council's approval and then develop specs to put out for bid early in 2022.
Thank you, Chief. Councilmember Jolly.
Thank you, Madam President. Chief, what you outline is an appropriate course forward. Are you able to offer any kind of history on the new owners in terms of their experience in the towing industry?
Not in great detail. I've had, as I mentioned, I've had some discussion, meeting with them. They, this, the individual that is, that currently, or that purchased it, she's a minority owner, female, that has been involved in the towing business for, I believe, a number of years. But specific to her prior experience, I can't address that. I think that will be addressed through the vetting process when we put out for bid. So far, any, I mean, they've been very receptive and certainly accept the contract that we have in place with all the fees that are per ordinance. I have no concerns in extending this contract under the new ownership at all.
Sounds good. With that being said, I'll offer an approving for consent if there are no objections. Thank you.
I see no objections. Would anyone from the audience like to comment on this? I see none, so we'll place on the consent. Thank you, Chief, and have a good evening.
Thank you, council.
Item number eight is proposed additional positions and level nine wage increase. This comes to us from the, from the Civil Service Department to approve the additional several positions to various parks and recreation classification levels and the wage increase for level nine starting pay. Good evening, Ms. Mayor. Oh, I think I have to. Nope, you should be able, are you there, Denise? We should be able to hear Ms. Mayor. Well, while we're waiting for Ms. Mayor, I will...
I want to say if she, if she's having problems, maybe if she can jump out and back in in the meeting real quick, sometimes that fixes audio issues.
Okay, Denise, I'm not sure if you heard that. If you jump out and then jump back in. Meanwhile, I'm guessing that's Mr. Davis, who would like to address the council. There we go. Ted is at you.
It is. Good evening, Council President Ted Davis, representing Parks and Recreation. So I'll try not to mess this up for Ms. Mayor and the Civil Service Commission. We're asking for some position additions that went through our PRC and our Civil Service Department, both got with approvals. A lot of these are housekeeping issues that already existed and were paid contractually and just were not part of Parks and Recreation's positions due to the departmental changes that occurred. We are asking for a couple new positions and an increase with level nine. New positions was a green meat tour coordinator, a naturalist, and a programmer position. And this to reflect, you know, obviously, changes in our department and changing needs programming-wise in the department and the community. It's always been something that I've looked at with a naturalist. It's amazing, as many nature preserves we have for a well-established suburban community that we don't make better use of these areas. Part-time program position will enable us to add additional programming. And then a green meat tour coordinator is really something that I think we probably all like to see green meat get more use. And right now, we're so reliant on volunteers, and I think there's an ability there to do more with some paid staff. So I'd be happy to answer any questions council might have on these positions.
Let me see if now we can, if we can, Denise? Are you able to? We're still having some problems hearing from Ms. Mayor, our Director of Human Resources and Civil Service. All right, so I'm going to go. Oh, Denise?
Yes, can you hear me?
Oh, now we can hear you. We've got you.
Wonderful. I'm muted and unmuted. I'm sure Mr. Davis did a good summation of what we're looking for. And I just wanted to let you know that the Civil Service Commission did approve this at its meeting of April 21st, 2021, with the understanding that this, as I'm sure he mentioned, this is going to allow us to expand programming and retain quality staff that we already have. So it was approved, and we're seeking approval now from council.
All right, Councilmember Jolly, thank you, Denise.
Thank you, Madam President. Just a quick question. So with Parks and Recreation and the umbrella that that kind of oversees at this point, you're kind of in a unique perspective in terms of city departments because you have a fair amount of employees who are not civil service, and then you have those who are civil service. Is there any, is there any noticeable way that these people interact with one another, being from the civil service side and the non-civil service side? Ted?
Yeah, Councilman Jolly, I'm not sure I understand the question because most of our employees...
Well, I think a lot of the employees at the rec center are not civil service. Is that correct?
Actually, as far as I'm aware, even they are part-time seasonal employees, but they are still represented by civil service.
Okay. So, okay. Well, I'll talk to you about that offline. But in terms of these positions themselves, I'll offer an approving for consent.
Madam President.
Vice President Burr.
I'd like to keep this on regular for now, please.
Okay. All right, we'll put it on the regular. And anyone from the audience? Councilmember Toy.
Thank you so much, Madam Chair. Maybe a general question to Denise or to Mr. Davis. Is there a hope in the future that, as we expand green meat and look at nuances, to have it somewhat, I don't want to say self-sustaining, but surely there's revenue enhancements there from rentals and, you know, the community gardens and various things to help pay these other wages we're going to assume with some other folks to beef it up, if you will? In the church, you know, running that and the Blue House, et cetera? Do we, the dollars and cents, is that going to be helpful in the future, do you think? Or is that maybe a goal we're having? Or help me out?
Councilwoman Toy, I don't know if self-sustaining is ever going to be a true achievable goal. Obviously, there are taxpayers, there's a mileage that helps support green meat right now, and I always see that being of a need. Because it's very nature, it's a historical site. It's not going to be revenue neutral. Now, these positions, we certainly are hoping that they will be revenue neutral.
Now, these positions, we certainly are hoping that they will be revenue neutral.
Okay.
Uh, the idea isn't, isn't to add large amounts of payroll on and, and that's why these are seasonal contractual, or seasonal, uh, part-time positions. We're not adding full-time positions. We are adding, you know, against seasonal part-time positions.
Right. And I ask those questions too because people that even watch us on Zoom, they're sitting there thinking, oh, okay, you know what I mean? Uh, what, you know, what kind of dollars and cents are we getting into? So, thank you for clarifying that as well. Thank you, Madam.
You're welcome.
Certainly. All right, so we will place that Denise and Ted on the regular agenda for May twenty-fourth. Item number nine is a word of bid. This two comes from Parks, Department of Parks and Recreation to remove and replace the existing playground structures at Country Homes, Homes Park from budget funds. Mr. Davis?
Thank you, Council President Ted Davis, again, representing Parks and Recreation. We are looking for approval for a playground replacement project at Country Homes Park. Uh, if you've seen the attachments, you've seen the proposed playground, uh, that we would like to install there. Uh, we had several bidders apply for this, actually, um, excuse me, I believe we had four come, four bids were submitted for this. We had a selection committee, uh, representative of DPW, uh, employees and Parks and Recreation staff that evaluated the proposals and our recommendation is for Miracle Recreation Equipment, uh, received the bid for this and I'd be happy to answer any questions Council might have.
Council, uh, Councilmember McCullough?
Madam President, I just have a, through the chair to Mr. Davis. Uh, I'm assuming, is this, this is just gonna be mulch? This is not that synthetic rubber, right?
Correct.
All right. Um, no, it looks cool. You do have a, uh, instead of a spinning globe or spear, now you've got like a spinning, uh, little, uh, evergreen tree, which is kind of fun. Um, no, I, I gotta give you guys kudos because it's always innovative. It's always fun when it comes to designing playgrounds and this one is, uh, just looks just, just in part with, uh, the innovation that you bring forward. So, um, if there's no objections, I would be happy to put, uh, an approving on consent.
All right, Vice President Burr?
Yeah, through the chair to Ted. Ted, I went out and looked at this playground equipment as I often like to do when you bring these to us. Um, it definitely looks old mainly because of the, the fading of the colored, um, you know, plastic pieces, but is there, besides the appearance, um, what's driving the need to replace this?
Um, so we look at a couple of things, obviously, I mean, appearance isn't really part of the equation. Uh, it's age of the equipment, it's, uh, use, uh, and, and where in the location. We try to look at neighborhoods that are skewing younger, that have schools there that, you know, we're getting a lot of feedback on. Also, this, I believe, is the second oldest playground set we have in the system. Stamoski being the oldest right now. So again, it's typically, we look at a twenty-year replacement cycle. I believe this is, uh, entering year twenty-three, I believe. So, this was actually budgeted for last year and we carried this over.
Is that twenty-year replacement cycle, just my own curiosity? Has that always been the case for Levonia or is that something we implemented recently?
I mean, that's pretty much industry standard, uh, and that's what we've been doing since I got here. That has been the goal. Um, obviously, we're behind on that and I don't know if we'll ever fully catch up with a twenty-year replacement cycle for everything but for playgrounds, but that is the goal.
Okay, uh, this park definitely seems to get a lot of heavy use. When I was out there, uh, this evening, prior to this meeting, it was literally crawling with kids over that existing equipment, so.
Yeah, and one of the things, Councilman Burr, we're also gonna do is we're gonna add accessible pathways as well, which we don't currently have there, so that will increase accessibility into the site and the equipment.
Thanks.
All right, uh, Councilmember McCullough?
One nice question, uh, through the chair to Mr. Davis. Do we, do you have on staff a certified playground inspector? Do we have someone on staff?
DPW conducts the inspections. They are, that's why we include them and when we go through and evaluate proposals, we want their input because they're obviously gonna be the ones that inspect it, uh, and tell us where we have deficiencies in the system as well.
Cool. Thank you.
All right, that was on consent, correct? Uh, Vice President Burr, did you have any objections to consent? Okay, that's on consent. All right, thank you Ted.
Thank you.
Item number ten is request for authorization to purchase one twenty-twenty-one Ford F-150 pickup using state of Michigan and Macomb County consortium bid pricing. This comes to us from the Department of Public Works from budgeted funds. Good evening, Mr. Moore.
Good evening, Council.
The Assistant Director of, uh, DPW.
Yes, thank you for that, but it's okay. Um, the first, I have several items in front of you tonight. The first item is an F-150 pickup truck. It was, uh, requested and approved in the twenty-twenty-one capital outlay budget. Uh, the, the truck will be used in building maintenance. It's gonna be used to move personnel and material and custodians around. Uh, it's being purchased through the state bid from Signature Ford of Owasso in the amount of thirty-two thousand, seven hundred and thirty-two dollars. It will be outfitted with a plow, uh, safety light package, spray-in bed liner, and a toolbox through the My Deals out of Truck and Trailer Specialties of Howell in the amount of thirteen thousand, six hundred and thirty-five dollars. There will be a vehicle that will be disposed of through the auction process so the fleet will not increase. And we are asking council to approve the purchase for a total of forty-six thousand, three hundred and sixty-seven dollars through the two mentioned vendors.
Councilmember White?
I'm happy to offer approving on consent if there's no objection.
Uh, I see no objection. Would anyone from the audience like to weigh in? Uh, oh, Betsy Calhoun, Ms. Calhoun. Let's see, you should be able to... There we go.
Can you hear me?
Yes, we can. Good evening, Ms. Calhoun.
Thank you, President McEntire and Council. You all know me from my involvement with the Green Leaf, um, Commission on Sustainability. And it's that interest which brings me here tonight. I would, um, like to personally urge you to think about the timing of purchasing new Ford one-fifties with the combustion engine. Um, Ford is coming out with electric one-fifties next year and they are saying now that it will be the lowest cost of ownership for any of their F-150 lines. Um, so over the life of the vehicle, it will be the cheapest F-150 around. Um, also Chevy Silverado is working on something, um, targeted perhaps toward the end of the year, um, toward, toward fleet vehicles such as the city. Um, again, the, the savings is something to consider about, um, to consider, um, just for savings and, um, cleaner air for our residents. And if you decided, you know, if, if any, if there were ever any a time to defer for a year, this would be the time to do it. Um, and, uh, just thank you. And, um, if you want to order, we probably would order it, um, ahead of time because they'll be hot. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, Ms. Calhoun. Uh, Council, Mr. Moore, did anyone, uh, wish to address this comment by Ms. Calhoun?
Madam President?
Sorry.
Oh, Councilmember McCullough and then Vice President Burr, please.
President, I'd just to address, Ms. Calhoun, I absolutely agree. I think this would be a great time to start going sustainability. I know with our pre-budgets and I'm sure Mr. Moore would, uh, agree that, you know, they are probably in something of need, probably right now to get some of these vehicles. Uh, but I am taking notes. I know that, obviously, from a price point standpoint, um, it would be a good time. There is another thing with the My Deals pricing, which is a cooperative purchasing agreement. Um, we're getting these vehicles a, as is right now, at, at substantial, uh, discounts, uh, since it's state procured, but that is definitely something that, uh, um, you know, we can definitely look into from a budget perspective. I think that ROI with, uh, saving energy and, and lowering our carbon footprint is very imperative and, uh, something we should, uh, trend, you know, in that direction. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. McCullough. Um, I don't know that anyone has offered...
Madam President?
I'm sorry, uh, I'm sorry, Kathy, it seemed like two different items. Um, Councilmember White has offered an approving on consent. Is there, uh, Vice President Burr?
No, I'm good.
All right, is there any objection to placing this on consent? All right, we'll place this on the consent agenda.
Thank you.
Thank you, Doug. Have a good evening.
Well, I'm still here.
Oh, you are still here. I, I skipped ahead of myself here. Uh, item eleven is request for authorization to purchase one Caterpillar mini excavator through the Sourcewell formerly NGPA purchasing agreement. This comes to us from the Public Works Division for use by the Roads Department from budgeted funds. Mr. Moore?
Good evening again. Uh, this was approved, requested and approved in the twenty-twenty-one capital outlay budget. Uh, the piece of equipment will be used by the roads section, but it is available for all DPW to use. It's a small excavator on tracks, um, used in backyards, small areas and restricted workspaces where large equipment doesn't fit well or at all. Often, these restricted work areas require hand digging. Uh, it can be moved on the current trailers that we have in the fleet. We are purchasing it through Sourcewell from Michigan Caterpillar out of New Hudson in the amount of twenty-two thousand, five hundred, twenty-six dollars and ninety, I'm sorry, twenty-two thousand, five hundred, twenty-eight dollars and ninety-six cents. Uh, this is a new piece of equipment, so we are increasing the fleet by this unit.
All right. Thank you, Doug. Council, Councilmember Toy?
Um, I'm gonna ask for an approving on consent. I love new equipment. I think it's great.
All right, uh, Councilmember Toy has offered an approving on consent. Are there any objections? Anyone from the audience seeing none? We'll go on to item number twelve. This is a request for authorization to purchase one twenty-twenty-one Ford F-350 four-by-four flatbed truck through the state of Michigan, Macomb County bid process. This two comes from the Public Service Division for use by the Roads Department from budgeted funds. Mr. Moore?
And this piece of equipment was requested improved in the twenty-twenty-one capital budget. Uh, this will be assigned to the Roads and Parks Section. It's going to be used for construction-related projects. Uh, the purchase of the chassis and the cab will be through the state bid process from Signature Ford out of Owasso in the amount of thirty thousand, nine hundred and sixty-one dollars. The outfitting of the truck, which includes toolboxes, a boss snowplow, uh, the municipal light packages and, uh, excuse me, I was gonna say toolboxes again, will be accomplished through the City of Rochester Hills Cooperative Agreement. The servicing dealer for this work will be Truck and Trailer Specialties of Howell in the amount of thirty-two thousand, five hundred and seventy-nine dollars. We will dispose of a light vehicle in the auction process. The fleet will not be increased. The total cost is sixty-three thousand, five hundred and forty dollars for this vehicle.
Thank you, Mr. Moore, Council. Uh, Councilmember McCullough?
Madam President, um, everything's in line. Paperwork looks good and it's a cooperative purchasing. I'll, uh, offer an approving for consent.
Are there any objections? Seeing none, we can place on consent. Are there any comments from the audience? Seeing none, we'll go on to item number thirteen. This is a request for authorization to purchase two dump trucks through the Rochester Hills Co-op Award Agreement. This comes from the Public Service Division for use by the Roads Department from budgeted funds. Mr. Moore?
Good evening. Uh, the trucks were requested and approved in the twenty-twenty-one capital budget. These will be assigned to the Roads Maintenance Section. There'll be frontline trucks for the, for snow and ice control, leaf pickup program, uh, the bulk brush pickup program. The trucks are twenty-twenty-one freight liners. Uh, the supplying, supplying dealer is Wolverine Freightliner out of Mount Clemens. The trucks will cost one hundred and seventy-six thousand, five hundred and sixty dollars. Upfitting will be done by the Truck and Trailer Specialties of Howell. Total cost for the, for that work will be two hundred and two thousand, one hundred and forty dollars. That will include the computerized system copy spread, which controls the salt application process. All equipment needed for salt applications, brine tanks for adding brine to roads, front snowplows and specialty lights for the trucks working on the roads. The total cost to purchase and outfit the two trucks is three hundred and seventy-eight thousand, seven hundred dollars and we will be disposing of two older trucks in the auction process.
Council?
Madam President?
Vice President Burr?
I'll offer the approving for consent if there's no objection.
Any objections? So I see no objections. Would anyone from the audience like to speak to this issue? Seeing none, we'll place on the consent agenda.
Thank you.
Thank you, uh, very much, Mr. Moore. Have a good evening.
Well, I'm still going.
You are still here. I keep looking like Water Department. No, and then that's Public Service too. Okay, this is a request for authorization to purchase four twenty-twenty-one Ford F-250 pickup trucks through the state of Michigan, Macomb County bid process. This comes to us from the Public Service Division, but for use by the Water Department from budgeted funds.
Yes, these pickups were requested and approved in the twenty-twenty-one capital budget. They will be used in the water and sewer section. Uh, each truck costs twenty-eight thousand, nine hundred and thirty-seven dollars for a total of one hundred and fifteen thousand, seven hundred and forty-eight dollars for the four trucks. Uh, outfitting of the trucks will be done through the Rochester Hills Co-op Agreement and that will be done by Truck and Trailer Specialties of Howell in the amount of thirty-one thousand, six hundred and twenty-five dollars or a total of one hundred and twenty-six thousand, five hundred dollars for the four trucks. That includes plows, light packages, air compressors, spray-in bed liners and the safety lighting. The total amount of the purchase will be two hundred and forty-two thousand, two hundred and forty-eight dollars and we will be getting rid of four vehicles in the auction process.
All right, the Councilmember White?
I will offer approving on consent if there's no objection.
All right, I see no objection. Would anyone from the, uh, audience like to address this? Seeing none, we'll go on to item number fifteen. This is a request for authorization to purchase two twenty-twenty-one Ford F-150 pickup trucks through the state of Michigan, Macomb County bid process. This comes from the Public Service Division for use by the Water Department from budgeted funds. Mr. Moore?
Yes, these were requested and approved in the twenty-twenty-one capital budget. The trucks are reused in the water and sewer section. Uh, purchase price is thirty-two thousand, seven hundred and thirty-two dollars for one truck or a total of sixty-five thousand, four hundred and sixty-four dollars for both. Uh, the outfitting of the trucks will be done through Truck and Trailer Specialties of Howell in the amount of thirteen thousand, six hundred and thirty-five dollars for one truck or a total of twenty-seven thousand, two hundred and seventy dollars. The total purchase price from the two vendors is ninety-two thousand, seven hundred and thirty-four dollars and we will be getting rid of two vehicles in the auction process. The fleet will not be increased.
Council?
I'll offer an approving for consent.
All right, uh, Councilmember Jolly has offered approving for consent. Any objections? I see none. Anyone from the audience like to address this? See no audience comments? With that, we...
Thank you.
Item number sixteen, you are welcome. This is a request for authorization to purchase one freight liner tandem axle dump truck through the Rochester Hills Co-op Bid Process. This comes to us from the Public Service Division for use by the Water Department from budgeted funds. Mr. Moore?
This is the last one tonight. Uh, this truck was requested and approved in the twenty-twenty-one capital budget. Uh, it's gonna be used in the water section for water breaks. Uh, materials will be hauled out of the hole and new materials will be brought back. Uh, the truck will replace an older tandem axle dump truck. Believe the truck was brought online in twenty-eleven. Uh, the maintenance cost of that vehicle is exceeding its value and with that will be disposed of through the auction process. The purchase price of the truck is one hundred thousand, five hundred and thirty-two dollars. Uh, the outfitting of the truck, which means the box being added, the safety lights and some of the ancillary items will be done by Truck and Trailer Specialties of Howell in the amount of forty thousand, four hundred and twenty-five dollars. The total purchase price is one hundred and forty thousand, nine hundred and fifty-seven dollars.
Council, uh, Councilmember Donovan?
Thank you, Madam President. Uh, through the chair for Mr. Moore. Uh, you've mentioned that, uh, the trucks, the older trucks will go to the auction. What happens to the proceeds from the vehicles that are sold at these auctions?
We receive the check and send it to the Finance Department. Uh, I believe they go into a revenue account. But I'm not, I, the funds get turned over to the Finance Department and used as needed.
All right, thank you, Mr. Moore. Uh, with that... All right. Thank you, Mr. Moore. Uh, with that being said, I'd like to offer approving on consent if there's no objection.
I see no objections. Would anyone from the audience like to address this agenda item? I see none. We'll place it on the agenda. I mean, on the, uh, consent agenda. All right, Mr. Moore, I think with that, we come to the end of your, uh, your show tonight. So thank you very much, Doug. Have a good
Yeah, counsel, thank you and have a good night.
All right. Item number 17 is a waiver petition. This comes from the Planning Commission Petition 2021 dash zero three dash zero two dash zero four submitted by EJB Enterprises LLC. Requesting to operate a full-service restaurant with drive-up window facilities, a Big B Coffee located on the east side of Ann Arbor Road between West Chicago Boulevard and Ann Arbor Trail. Three eight zero four seven Ann Arbor Road in the northeast quarter of section 31. Good evening, Mr. Teramina.
Thank you, Madam President. Uh, this is a request for Big B Coffee, uh, at the Sunny Village Shopping Center, which is on Ann Arbor Road. Just west of the intersection with Ann Arbor Trail. Uh, the zoning of the property is C1 local business. Uh, the layout for the Big B shows a total of 34 seats for the restaurant. Uh, typically we restrict seating in C1 districts to 30. Uh, in this case, the petitioner is asking for four additional seats. Uh, this is something counsel can do, uh, by way of a, a separate resolution and, and has been done in, in instance, instances in the past. So as you can see from this diagram, Sunny Village is a three-building, uh, multi-tenant retail complex. The Big B Coffee would be located here at the north end of the, uh, of the shopping center. Uh, if you see that little projection right there, that's actually the overhang of what used to be an old bank. So what the petitioner wants to do is, uh, take advantage of the fact that this building already has a, a drive-up. And, uh, it would be situated here, the north end cap of that building. Uh, this shows how the stacking, uh, would work behind the building. There's some parking spaces back here currently. Uh, those would be eliminated and, uh, and relocated on the site. Uh, there's ample parking available. Uh, the loading zone would be preserved. There's ample stake, stake, uh, stacking, as I mentioned, as well as a bypass lane. Uh, the canopy over here with, is, uh, where the pickup window is already located, uh, for this, uh, unit. Uh, Planning Commission reviewed this item. Uh, felt that it was a, a good use, uh, for this corner. Uh, this is something, uh, this is actually a relocation. Big B is currently located, uh, at, uh, at, uh, Ann Arbor and Newburgh, about a third of a mile from this location uh, with no drive-up facility. So this, this would replace that restaurant, uh, and offer the, uh, the drive-up opportunities. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Teramina. Council member Toy.
It's muted.
Council member Toy.
I'm so sorry. Excuse me. Um, anything we can do to help these businesses, um, in these strip centers, uh, I'm pretty familiar because there's a McDonald's over here on the left, if I'm not mistaken. Um, whatever we can do, uh, drive-through window, I mean, that is like gold right now. So, um, I'm going to ask for approving, uh, except to counsel if they want a regular consent, since I'm jumping out early. Thanks.
Uh, council member, uh, McCullough and Donovan.
Thank you, Madam President. Um, the petitioner added that if we can remember, he's, uh, the one that brought forward the other Big B, um, development at Middlebelt and Plymouth and, uh, you know, just even what, what I'm seeing at the present, uh, he's been doing, uh, an incredible job with, uh, showing innovative development, um, to some of our older, uh, strip, uh, malls around the city. So, um, from that, I think this is a great development. Again, it's echoing what Council member Toy said. This is the new way, uh, of, uh, of commerce and, uh, and business to try to keep that drive-through rolling from the post-pandemic. So, um, I think this is a great thing. I'm excited for it and, uh, wish you the best. Ed, thanks.
Thank you, uh, council member McCullough. Council member Donovan.
Thank you, Madam President. Through the chair to Mr. Tormina. Uh, you already kind of answered my question. Uh, I wasn't 100% certain if the petitioner was the petitioner from the previous location or the location at Newburgh and Ann Arbor Road right there. I guess out of curiosity, that leave that family video corner, I believe that vacant, right? They, they would be leaving, they would be moving the, the Big B down the street, correct?
That is correct.
Thank you, Mr. Tormina.
Um, I, I have a question for the petitioner. Uh, hi, Ed. This is Kathleen. The, um, and I, I really, uh, agree with what council member McCullough said. Your, your, uh, willingness to invest in existing properties in Livonia and add some economic activity and vitality is great. Does Big B offer, and this is probably really corporate questions, does Big B offer an app like the, the, like the national chains do where you can order ahead of time? And, uh, you know, pull up and your, your drink is ready or, or all the drive-through orders processed as you drive through? And, and I'll tell you this, I used to go to Big B a lot when there were locations that were, uh, convenient on my commute and, uh, ways about town. Unfortunately, a number of those closed. So I, I don't, I'm not as familiar with Big B as I used to be.
Uh, well, thank you, everyone, and good evening. Uh, I know it's a late night for everyone and I
Oh, you know what? We should ask you to give your, your full name and your address.
Oh, sorry. Um, Ed Boyson, address is three seven four zero three Ann Arbor Road, uh, in Livonia. So yeah, again, thank you for, uh, burning the, the night oil here with us, uh, and, and doing what you can. So yes, um, you know, a few months ago, uh, counsel McCullough did state correctly that I did petition for that site on Plymouth and Middlebelt. Um, so that is our second location and of, um, as Mr. Tormina pointed out, this would be a relocation of our current site. So we've been in Livonia there for seven years. We were lucky enough to, the timing worked out that our lease was ending on the family video site. And that we were able to find a suitable location to add a drive-through facility, uh, within the same area, really. Uh, you know, if you remember my story, I grew up in Livonia. Go double blue and white. Um, so you know, I, I love to be in here and I, I want to, uh, do what I can for the community. Um, and you know, help these, you know, buildings and businesses and whatnot, stay afloat. To answer, to answer your question, uh, Madam Chair, uh, Madam President, you know, we are developing an app, uh, for mobile ordering ahead. Uh, our site is actually one of the test sites for that. Uh, so you know, you can go online, um, place an order and we'll have it ready for when you are ready to pick it up.
Thank you. And, and my question didn't go to whether or not I thought this was a good project, but a way to, you know, a way to compete with the national chains. And, uh, you know, as, as I'm sure you know, right? Um, because you know your competition well. That's a, I think that, that seems to be a key, uh, attribute, right, or benefit that Starbucks has, is that you can order very easily. And I will say this. They have one of the better, um, online ordering apps of all the, of all the chain places I'm familiar with. So I'm delighted that Big B is going to be getting one, and I think it's wonderful that you're going to be a test site. So, um, and I do realize this is a, this is a relocation, but, um, we're just delighted that you're staying in Livonia and finding existing spaces to, to put your great businesses.
Thank you. I definitely appreciate, appreciate it.
Um, was that offered for, um, Mr. Attorney? We can put waivers can go on consent, correct?
Yes. Than the answer the question.
Pardon me?
Took me longer to find the mute button than to answer the question.
Well, that's occupational hazard at 10:30. Um, and that was offered for consent. Is that correct? Was that, uh, council member McCullough? That was, did you offer the approving?
No, it was council member Toy and I think she did
I'm sorry. I'm trying to keep track of my notes. I can't read my handwriting at this
I'm sorry. Consent, madam chair.
Great. All right. Item number, uh, thank you, uh, Mr. Woodson. Um, item number 18 is a waiver petition. This comes to some Planning Commission regarding petition 2021 dash zero three dash zero two dash zero five submitted by MNB Dining Incorporated, requesting to expand the existing food sop, food service operation and Class C liquor license of the existing restaurant Thomas's Family Dining to include an outdoor dining patio located on the south side of Plymouth Road betweenington Stark Roads, three three nine seven one Plymouth Road in the northeast quarter of section 33. Mr. Teramina.
Thank you, Madam President. Uh, this is, petition involves Thomas's Restaurant. I think everyone is familiar with the location on Plymouth Road. This is a zoning map I wanted to show you, showing the, the split zoning, uh, the, where the restaurant and all the parking is located is zone uh, C2 commercial, and then the southerly portion of the site is, uh, zone parking. And that, that part of the property currently is, is undeveloped. Uh, but the patio, uh, would go here in the, in the front part of the, uh, the building. Uh, between the building and, and Plymouth Road, right now the setback is, is about 60 feet for the building. Uh, the patio would extend roughly 23 feet. So, uh, between the building and the front edge of the monument sign is where the, uh, the patio would be constructed. Uh, this ha- highlights the area, um, where it would go, but this is the illustration showing what the patio would actually look like. Uh, seating, uh, would be, uh, for the patio, uh, would be, um, I believe about 20 or 22, uh, spaces. This will increase the parking requirement, uh, resulting in a parking deficiency. So the petitioner has the option of going before the zoning board of appeals for that parking deficiency. Uh, or alternatively, um, land banking the parking, as I showed you originally, or, um, hitting that parking district. Uh, while he would not be required to build, uh, the parking spaces at this time, he could show them on the plan. And if it ever in the future, he was required to build those, uh, that area would be available. But this would avoid the need to go to the zoning board of appeals. Uh, that again is, is a, is a, a second option. Uh, this does involve the operation of a Class C liquor license. Uh, there are two other, uh, Class C licensed businesses within a thousand feet of this, so it will require a waiver of that requirement. Uh, they currently operate a Class C license at Thomas's, but because this is an expansion of that use, it'll require the same approval, uh, that was required originally, the, the separation requirement from the other two businesses, which, uh, by the way, is Plymouth Roadhouse Bar and Grill and Woodland, uh, Lanes. Uh, this fully detailed landscaped, uh, uh, plan, uh, Planning Commission loved it and, uh, and is recommending approval.
Thank you. Um,
I failed to mention, and I apologize, that this, uh, the, the patio will be completely fenced. Uh, there will be access between the restaurant into the patio, so that's restricted, uh, something that we look for, for, um, the serving of alcohol in this area. And there would be a secondary egress, uh, gate provided that would, uh, go directly to the sidewalk in the parking lot.
Uh, before I go to counsel, is the petitioner on the phone? I, I can't see everyone.
He is.
All right. Um,
Mr. Kusak.
Yeah. Good evening, Mr. Kusak. I'm, I'm going to go to, um, I don't know if you'd like to say anything before I go to the counsel. So I don't know if I have to, and I'm
Good evening.
Good evening. How are you?
Doing very well. Thank you very much. Thank you, uh, for staying up this late and going over this.
This is your time. Thank you for, you know, thank you for, uh, doing business in Livonia and hanging in there with us. I don't know if you wanted to make any comments before I go to the council to, uh, see if they have any questions?
Uh, not really. If you have any questions, I'm, I'm here to answer.
Okay. Um, I'll go first to council member Toy and then to vice president Burr.
Uh, thank you, Madam Chair. Um, Mr. Kusak, I had an opportunity at your restaurant a few days ago. The food is always, always excellent. The service is outstanding. Um, I'm so glad that you decided to go outside a little bit, um, here and do the kinds of things you're doing. You've already invested a lot of money in there. And, um, kudos to you.
Thank you.
And once again, Madam Chair, I'm going to jump out early and ask for an approving on this. He, he does an outstanding job. He's, he's a great businessman. He's a great owner down there. He's a Plymouth Road neighbor and, um, he deserves the very best. So thank you for doing your business in Livonia and being on top of it. Thanks so much.
I, I thank you very much. You're very kind.
Thank you. Uh, vice president Burr.
I'll go one step further and offer it for consent. I wish, I assume is what council member Toy intended to do.
Right, please.
Um, again, I can't
It's her resolution. I'm just assuming she wanted it for consent.
Sure, go right ahead.
I can't see if there are any because of the, the view with Mark sharing a screen, which, but, um, it doesn't look like we have any objections. If anyone from the audience would like to comment?
I, oh, I was just going to say, Madam President, is I, I, I love this and I don't see any issues with it. I think he's checked all the boxes and uh, it's more outdoor dining along Plymouth Road is a good thing.
Uh, Mr. Kusak, I, I'd just like to, oh, uh, council member Donovan.
Thank you, Madam President. I just briefly wanted to add that, uh, with the hospitality industry, if the local family-run restaurants like Thomas', it's extremely difficult, uh, with COVID and to find, uh, staff and to operate, to compete against the large chain restaurants with millions of dollars, uh, in their bank accounts. Family, this one, uh, you know, there's the bread and butter. And, uh, people really enjoy them. It's awesome to see family fun, uh, investing again into their business, uh, to continue to serve our community. So I really look forward to this and a beautiful job.
Thank you, uh, council member Donovan and Mr. Kusak. I'd just like to say, uh, thank you for, you've, you've invested and reinvested in your restaurant and, uh, thank you for continuing to invest in your restaurant and our city. And I also want to say thank you for everything you do, you do for our community. You, uh, run a great business and you're very generous and, uh, a very much an appreciative member of the community. So thank you for all that.
Thank you. Thank you. I really appreciate all the, all the comments.
All right. Well, we're looking forward and it's consent, so you don't have to come back in two weeks. We're just looking forward to, uh, as I'm sure you are, to be able to get construction going before construction materials go up anymore. And
Yes, we are.
Coming to see you, uh, even before the, the patio is open, but especially once the patio is open. Have a good evening. Thank you.
Thank you so much. Good night.
Good night. Uh, item number 19 is also a waving petition, a waiver petition that comes to us from the Planning Commission regarding petition 2021 dash zero three dash zero two dash zero seven submitted by Sheldon Center LLC to expand the existing commercial shopping center Sheldon Park Village, three three one one one, three three two five one Plymouth Road to include the construction and operation of a freestanding full-service restaurant with drive-through facilities, a Dairy Queen, and the construction of a second freestanding building in preparation of operating a limited service restaurant lo- with drive-through facilities located at the southeast corner of Plymouth and Farmington Road in the northeast quarter of section 34. Mr. Teramina.
Uh, thank you. Uh, this petition involves, uh, the construction of two new commercial outlot buildings at Sheldon Park Village, uh, which as you know, is at the corner, southeast corner of Plymouth and Farmington Roads. Both of the, uh, outlots are for restaurants that would have drive-up operations. One, as you mentioned, is for a Dairy Queen and the other is for a restaurant that has yet to be identified. Uh, Sheldon Park Village, as you can see here on the aerial photograph, is a large site, just under 11 acres in size. Six hundred, over 600 feet of frontage on both, uh, Farmington Road and, uh, Plymouth Road. Uh, the main building, about 80,000 square feet, um, is, um, is, is anchored by, uh, the Rite Aid at one end. Uh, there's a Michigan Lottery, a Dollar General, Larry's Food Land and Chris's Furniture, uh, to, just to mention a few other tenants there. And then a smaller building located, uh, with frontage on Farmington Road, uh, that building is about 9,000 square feet. So both of the outlaw buildings and this, I'm showing you the plan that you approved in 2016. And that project approved, uh, the Jimmy John's Restaurant, which is located here, as well as two future outlaw buildings. So the site plan that was approved showed these two outlaw, uh, buildings. Uh, the one in the middle, uh, is where the Dairy Queen would be, would go. And the one on the left-hand side here is, uh, is the other, uh, restaurant with drive-up operations. Uh, this is the, the detailed, uh, site plan, uh, today showing, uh, both of the, the new restaurant, uh, pads and buildings. Um, the Dairy Queen, as I said, would occupy the middle outlaw. Uh, the drive-up operations, as you would expect, would be on the, uh, east side of the building, uh, the traffic lane serving the drive-up would commence on the west side of the building. Wrap around the back and then, uh, to the east side where the pickup window would be located. Uh, there would be, uh, outdoor dining available, uh, at the, at, at the restaurant. The building is one-story in height. Roughly 2,600, uh, square feet in total size. Uh, inside the building would be 48 customer seats. The patio would provide an additional 18 seats. So seating is, uh, roughly 66 altogether. Uh, the, um, the, the stacking lane, uh, the opportunities for a bypass, uh, once you get past this, uh, point. There's just a small portion of the, uh, an area behind the building where a bypass opportunity would not be available, but as you can see here. uh, the bypass would be available, uh, uh, for most of the west side of the building as well as the east side, uh, once you get past this point in, in the queue. Uh, one-way circulation, uh, would be provided around the building. Uh, the other restaurant, uh, as you can see, would have a similar type of circulation pattern, one-way. Uh, uh, in this case, on the east side of the building, there would be a two-way aisle on the west side. And all of the parking and circulation is really, uh, a continuation of, uh, the parking, uh, lot and the drive aisles, uh, that are, that are currently in place. Uh, as you drive by the site currently, this area is fenced off, but all of the parking that is shown here in the lighter shade of gray is, is existing. It's only the, the area of impact is really, uh, the darker area here, including, uh, the two buildings. There'd be a common dumpster area located, uh, here, uh, landscaping around each of the buildings. Uh, the Dairy Queen, uh, design, uh, includes a combination of, of brick as well as, uh, metal panels. There is a small amount of EPIS, which is really in the form of the signs on the one side of the building. Um, these would have to go before the zoning board of appeals. Uh, in fact, the whole signage package exceeds what the ordinance allows. Uh, so that's something that the ZBA would have to, um, to act on. We don't have all of the, the signage details at this time, uh, but the Planning Commission is recommending that, uh, that issue be, uh, reviewed and, and resolved to the satisfaction of, uh, of the zoning board of appeals. Uh, the, uh, other building is really designed to mimic the design of the, the other, the main buildings. As you know, there was a complete facelift, uh, done for the shopping center buildings and, uh, the features, uh, for the smaller restaurant are really in tune with, with what was done with the, the other, um, uh, buildings. Uh, parking is adequate for the site. In fact, there's, there's a slight overage in, uh, parking. No new curb cuts would be added, uh, for the, uh, restaurants. And as I mentioned, uh, signage is something that, uh, still has to be reviewed by the, uh, uh, by the zoning board of appeals. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Toramina. Um, Councilmember McCullough and then Councilmember Donovan.
Thank you, Madam President. Um, I don't know who is more happy, myself or my six-year-old daughter Harper, when we found out that Dairy Queen would be potentially coming to that corner. Um, that spot, I mean, out of all seriousness, that spot has been almost a vacant eyesore for years and years and years. And for this to have the development finally come in is, is a win for the city. Uh, we can finally get our blizzards in Livonia. We don't have to go to Farmington Hills. And then obviously adding that, uh, that second, uh, that second drive-through, uh, office at the restaurant is going to be a huge plus too. So, I applaud everyone. Um, I'll offer an approving for consent if there's no objections. And, uh, you know, thank everybody for, uh, bringing Dairy Queen in. And, um, I just wanted to let ZBA know, uh, at least my recommendation is please approve that Cool Spoon that, uh, faces on the west side of the building. Thanks.
Uh, Councilmember Donovan.
Uh, thank you, Madam President. Through the chair, uh, Mr. Toramina, can you go back to the share screen with the print, uh, the bird's eye view print? Uh, I had a question about the dumpster enclosure. Thank you. I don't have my packet accessible. I apologize. Is that really the best location? I, I feel like that dumpster enclosure, I mean, it's just right there when you, when you enter. I, I, I guess just personal preference, which take that for what it's worth.
Yeah.
Maybe would, usually in a corner. This seems like, I mean, right when you walk into the front door of either establishment, it's just right there in front of your face. I know typically speaking dumpster enclosures are, are tucked away in a corner somewhere so that they're not necessarily in front, uh, of view.
Yeah. And the, the Planning Commission did struggle with that a little bit. In fact, the original plans showed one of the dumpsters, uh, in a different position back here behind this restaurant. And, uh, they felt that if they were consolidated and there was a landscape island provided around it, there could be some, uh, shrubs, uh, planted that would help conceal the dumpsters. I will say that the, uh, entrance way to the, uh, well, the entrance way, the main entrance to the Dairy Queen is located here. The main entrance, I believe, to the, uh, second restaurant is located here. Uh, the dumpsters would kind of sit in the, right in the middle between the two restaurants on the backside. There would be some opportunity from screening. Uh, is it ideal? No. You know, ideal is usually when they can, you know, conceal it in the corner of the property. Uh, we don't have that opportunity here. Or they can tuck it inside the building itself somewhere or the service area directly behind the building. Uh, with the compact design here, it makes doing that awfully difficult. So, I think that's why the Planning Commission struggled with, uh, the placement of the dumpsters and, and landed with this as being a, a good, uh, uh, second option, you know, given the constraints posed by the, uh, the, the, the others.
Thanks, Mr. Toramina. Do appreciate it.
All right. Um, does that satisfy, uh, Councilmember McCullough? Oh, just sorry. Just had a little technical. I have a very sophisticated setup with, uh, upside-down, uh, inbox and reams of paper supporting my, my, uh, setup here. Okay. Um, Councilmember McCullough, does that satisfy your, not McCullough, Donovan. All right.
Yes. Thank you, Madam President.
Thank you. Uh, yes.
I know, I know the hour's late, but I just want to give a plug for Handy Dip here on Five Mile Two.
Thank you.
Yes, yummy.
They closed-
Extra ice cream. Excellent.
They closed at 10:00. So, uh-
Oh, yeah. It's too late now.
Get there tonight. But yes, we have, we're, ice cream, Livonia loves our ice cream. All right. Um, with the, and that was on the, was that on the consent? And I'm sorry, Councilmember White.
I just had a quick question for Mr. Toramina. I'm sorry, Mark, if you already answered this, but is there, um, going to be any outside tables around the Dairy Queen and/or is there space with this other, uh, proposed, uh, restaurant, um, site?
Yeah. The Dairy Queen does have, they are showing outdoor, uh, dining opportunities on the west side of the building. Uh, that is not the case for the other smaller, uh, restaurant. If that's something that, uh, is possible in the future, um, we, you know, we'll have to wait for the details to come out. There might be very limited opportunity for outdoor dining there, but it wouldn't be the same as, uh, the, the DQ.
Okay. Thank you, Mark.
I can't get my, I, I'm gonna ask Mr. Barr if he would read 20 because I need to get a drink of water. My, my voice is, uh, failing me. So, as is my technology.
I'd be happy to do that.
When you read this, I'm gonna grab a drink of water. Thank you.
Sir, item number 20 from the Planning Commission regarding petition 2021-04-08-03 submitted by Shaw Construction to construct in addition to the existing building located on the east side of Farmington Road between Schoolcraft and Linden, 13980 Farmington, in the southwest quarter of Section 22. Um, Mark, you wanna take us away on this one?
Thank you. Um, Shaw Construction Company is proposing a small addition. I'll jump right to the site plan. Uh, get everyone familiar with this location. Uh, so Farmington Road, the east side, just north of Schoolcraft, uh, Road. Uh, the gas station is located, uh, uh, here. There's a residential property, uh, to, directly to the, uh, to the north. Uh, Shaw Construction has been here for many years. The, the single-story building, as exists today, is about 2,800 square feet. Uh, the property is, uh, split zone, so what you have is the north portion zone parking, uh, the southerly portion is, um, is, is zone, uh, C2 commercial. The addition they want to build, and, and here's a, a photograph of the building. I think everyone is now probably familiar with the building as you drive by it all the time. Uh, what they would like to do is construct a small addition here on the north side of the building. Uh, that addition would be about 933, uh, square feet in total area, uh, bringing the, bringing the building, uh, up to a square footage of about 3,750 square feet. Uh, they need it for additional, uh, office space. Um, it's pretty straightforward. Uh, the building, uh, addition completely complies with the setback requirements. Even though the existing building is not conforming, the addition would be conforming. There's a wall, uh, that separates the properties, uh, from the residential. A portion here is a fence, uh, but that's something that the petitioner could have waived, uh, via an agreement with the, uh, property owner to the north. That's something that, uh, the, the resolution, uh, recommends. And other than that, um, there's no other site, uh, site improvements. The, the addition is designed to really match or, and complement the design of the existing building. Planning Commission is recommending approval.
Thank you, uh, Mr. Toramina. Councilmember Toy.
Madam Chair, as Mr. Toramina pointed out, Shaw's been here for a long time. It's not a drive-through window, but it's an addition that, um, as they need it. And everything's in order. I mean, you can't really argue with it. So, once again, I'm gonna offer an approving up to the council if they want to do consent or, um, the regular.
Madam President.
Vice President Barr.
I'm just, I'm sorry. Did I just jump in front of someone? No. Okay. 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 I just, I suddenly saw a hand. Uh, I'm just delighted that someone wants to add office space. It's kind of hard to believe in this day and age. But, uh, yeah, having looked at this, I don't have any objection to it. I, I think he could go on consent.
Are there any objections to placing on consent? All right. Seeing none, we'll place on consent. Anyone in the audience have any? And I think I forgot to ask on the last item, if anyone in the audience had any, um, anything they wanted to add. Um, Mr. Rapsen. We should be able to, there we go. Good evening, Mr.-
Good evening. Now, we just appreciate, um, council considering our petition. And, uh, like Mark said, we've been there since 1987. The building served us well. Um, we have, uh, experienced some growth in the last few years and, and we need the additional office space. So, we appreciate it. Thank you.
Um, thank you. We're delighted to have continued investment in Livonia. Uh, with that, we come to the end of the agenda. And as our city attorney pointed out to me, I completely forgot to go to audience communication at the beginning of the study meeting. And since I neglected to do it at the beginning of our study meeting, it's especially important to go at the end. If anyone would like to communicate with council on any item not in this evening's agenda, now is your opportunity to do so. Um, I'm looking. We're down to just a few attendees. I do not see anybody raising their hand. Just want to make sure. Uh, I'm sorry, Councilmember Jolly, were you raising your hand? Okay. All right. Um, with that, we are at the end of our agenda and we can adjourn at 10:58 PM. Good night, Livonia. Thank you, everyone. Thank you, Livonia TV. Thank you, Casey. Thank you, council. Department heads, everyone, and of course, all of our petitioners and people that stayed on. Good night.